Calling the meeting to order at six o'clock PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. We're going to start tonight as usual with the Board and Administration role calls. Mr. Phil, here.
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin?
Here.
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. Vio?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on our agenda is public comments. We have not received any prior to the meeting. So moving on to our first discussion and action item, a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes from the special session on September 25th, 2023, and the regular school board meeting, September 25th, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is our recognitions, presentations, and showcase, and we're going to do a little flop here from the agenda. We're going to start with the presentation by Frau Hendricks. Come on up.
Like to here?
Yeah. I wasn't really prepared.
Just because my voice is bad, you got to use the mic.
All right. Hi, thank you. I was not really formally prepared for presentation, but I appreciate Mr. Schuler inviting me and some of my German students, my own students, and then our visiting student partners from Germany as part of the German-American Partnership Program. This past summer, I took 14 students to Germany for a month, and we did a week of traveling, and then we did almost three weeks where the students each stayed with a family and had a partner and went to school and spoke some German, hopefully. And then now, those same partners are here, staying with their partners. They were in New York City for four nights, and then now they are in Watertown for two weeks with their partners. So they just arrived on Tuesday, they had one day in school last week, and then a nice long weekend with their families, and then today they had their second day in school, and they have a jam-packed two weeks of all Watertown local things and sporting things and family things and doing things in school, doing presentations and visiting other classes and all sorts of things. And many of them were able to join us tonight after this invitation. Some of them had prior commitments. The other two teachers from Germany already had Vikings tickets that they bought like a month ago or something. So, yeah, so they're not here, but, yeah. So I don't know if you had questions for any of the students or wanted them to stand up, or I'm not sure.
Maybe the Watertown mayor student could introduce their German host student.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Should they stand up and do that one at a time?
That'd be great, yeah.
First, hi, I'm Jack, and my partner is Bonnie.
Stand up.
Welcome.
I'm Owen, and my partner is Kena.
I'm Caleb, and that's my partner Sarah.
I'm Kate, and this is my partner Elizabeth.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Maddie, and I will introduce Lena and Illo for you, their partners.
I'm Trevor, and this is my partner Elias.
Hello.
I'm Brandon, my partner is Yana.
Hi, Kendall, this is my partner Isla.
Nice, thanks everybody.
What do you all think of Watertown so far?
You can be honest.
Yeah.
It's a lot of driving.
I suppose you guys are used to walking a lot.
Yeah.
So where in Germany are you from?
Black Forest, so South Germany.
I heard a couple of them today say that they miss the bread.
Yeah. Is there any foods that you've tried here yet that you really like?
The doughnuts. They're really good.
Had breakfast this morning in the school cafeteria, those doughnuts?
No.
No.
I just had a cookie.
Did you go to Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes.
There you go. And I heard you said that cafeteria food is not as good as yours.
But not bad. But they have a bit of homemade cooking, like appetizer salad or soup, and then a main meal, and then dessert, and it's kind of a lot. It's more like their main meal of the day, more dinner-like than lunch-like, actually. It's a little bit, we can't compare.
Well, enjoy the rest of your time here. They may want to go to the volleyball game tomorrow night? Don't know.
We're all going to the Wild game tomorrow night.
Oh, that's great, it's fun.
And we're bummed all things on the same day.
Yeah.
But I think they'll make some volleyball games, so.
The Wild game will be fun.
Yeah.
The Wild is fun.
Yeah.
Yes, enjoy your stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming. You're free to go. I got some German chocolates to share with you guys.
They're giving Lisa, she's a little sad today.
Are there bars in there, people like open them and each take one? They're for holiday. If they're made in Germany, they're.
Thank you.
Good and tasty. Are they lent?
We'll give them a minute to leave.
Make it better.
The other presentations we have tonight are the school improvement plans. We're going to start tonight with Ms. Dimmler, right? Is that Darren?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you want to?
Did you bring chocolates for us?
I did not.
Okay.
And I'm not excited about going first. Usually I can kind of follow what everybody else is doing, so we'll see how this goes. So to start with our 2022-23 improvement plan, our first goal was really working on the core assessment tool. Last year was our first year, so we're in our second year of implementing this assessment tool in preschool, and we're finding, you know, year two just goes a little bit better than year one, and I think year three it's going to be even better. Our preschool teachers have been really meeting in their reflective practice teams, working on the tool, identifying how best to use it, and working on their reliability with it. So I think that is helping our scores. We had last year in our three-year-old, 91% of the children were able to identify the first letter of their name for a three-year-old, that's pretty good. Four- and five-year-olds in just our regular non-extended-day program, we're securing recognizing 13 letters, and our four- and fives in our extended-day recognized 26, or 86% of them, excuse me, recognized all 26 letters. Our other goal under professional development was supporting a safe and welcoming school environment, and one of our biggest things was working on tightening up our security at the CLC. We now have all our doors locked, we use, you know, the system of having ringing the bell to get in and Raptor to scanning visitors, and it was a little challenging at first, but we've gotten in the habit of it, and we used it all summer, and it's going really well. Creating a welcoming and accessible environment was our goal under facilities, and in that goal, again, really working to support a safe and welcoming environment, making sure our, the entrances were clear. That can be a challenge in the winter around our building with our old sidewalks. We're still working on securing our fire exit off the auditorium stage. There's a ramp that is just not in great shape, and again, making sure we have secure entrances to all our buildings using our security monitor system, just to make sure we know who's in and out of the building at all times. And then finally, under technology, was really increasing social media and marketing, and that's one thing I've really been working on as the community ed director, to increase our marketing through all social media platforms, our e-newsletters, improving our community ed catalog, and just general communication out to community members. So that is an overview of 22-23.
And so Darren, the purpose of this is to kind of go over last year's goals?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. So the first part is just, yeah, just to review last year's goals and how they accomplish those goals, and then the second half, now Amy will explain a little bit about some of the new goals for the new school year, so, and that'll be just a verbal, just verbalize that.
And to just, our goals for 22-23 were based on the strategic plan that we had in place last year, and so this year we really had some easily identified commitments from the strategic plan that we are working on. The first being that community ed is providing high-quality and interest-based learning opportunities for all community members, and that is just really something we are working on as a community ed team, to identify, to reach out, to find what are some varied opportunities that we can work on providing to meet interest from age zero to 99. Making sure all employees report satisfaction in the workplace. In a building with a variety of different programming and departments, making sure that we are collectively working well together and have a positive culture and climate are one of the areas that we're focusing in on, with surveys, with opportunities to get together as a building, to work together. Our other goal is helping sure all children are ready for kindergarten, and again, working with that core assessment tool to identify that students are ready, our reflective practice teams, really identifying what those goals are and how are we ensuring that children are ready for kindergarten. And then finally, ensuring all parents report satisfaction with their child educational experience, both in our childcare programming and our preschool programming. So those are our goals for this year. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Ms. O'Connell.
So last year, when we look at our 22-23 goals, we had two goals in the area of curriculum, both that were built around MCA targets and increasing our achievement levels of meets or exceeds on those. So the first goal was for third graders to increase from 47.6% in 2022 to 50.6% in 2023. We did meet that goal in the area of literacy, increasing from the 47.6% to 51.5%. The second part of that goal was around fourth graders, increasing from 57% to 60%, and they did meet that goal as well and did increase. So the fourth graders went, well, the third graders did not meet it, but they made some growth. They went from 68.9% to 69.3%. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page here. We met it in literacy for both, increasing from 57 to 60.6. And the area of math, then, we had a similar kind of goal. So for third grade, we were looking to increase from 68.9% to 71.9%. We did not make that goal, but we did make improvements. We ended at 69.3%. You can see denoted in red there, since we weren't quite there. And then for fourth grade, we were looking to move the needle from 67.3% to 70%. You can see that they really knocked that one out of the park. So they went from 67.3 to 78.1. As you've heard me talk about throughout last year, we're really looking at that 80-15-5 triangle with 80% of our kids meeting targets, so we did get darn near close to that 80% with those fourth-grade cohorts that we've sent on to the middle school now, especially in the area of math. Professional development-wise, we are focusing on knowing our impact, which was our theme for last year, through PLCs. We did partially meet that goal. All of our teams did fully implement what we call collective efficacy cycles throughout the school year. That was those short-term cycles where they set a SMART goal and then measured student growth to get to that goal over the course of six to eight weeks. But we're still working on establishing measures to monitor that fidelity and make sure that the assessments that we're creating and using to measure our progress in those six to eight weeks are truly reflective and indicative of the level at which the state standards are. That will better help us inform our predictability with making sure that we're moving the needle on those MCA broader targets if our measuring is ensuring that it's measuring it at the same level of rigor as the standards are. In the area of facilities, our goal was making sure that all of our students were able to be caring, safe problem solvers in all areas of our school and to use all of their tools appropriately. We did meet that goal. Students were able to consistently demonstrate behaviors on par with being a caring, safe problem solver, and they're able to articulate the expected behaviors in all of the different areas of our school. We changed to that language school-wide as part of our PBS kind of revamp last year, and it's been really helpful because you can use those three words for helping kids process any sort of incident. Caring can be about if we're using a tool appropriately, like a pencil, or if we're choosing an action towards somebody else that demonstrates being caring. So it's helped even when a child has struggled to be able to kind of use kid-friendly words, but that help them understand what we're trying to do, to reflect upon their actions and where we need to do better. And then lastly, last year we had a goal in the area of technology and using that to reinforce and practice application and extend our content. We did meet that goal. We did rewrite with the help of our tech department, a process for vetting technology resources and making sure that the resources that teachers are requesting to use in their classroom do reflect what we're wanting kids to be able to have access to, and also working on providing some continuity of experience from kindergarten up through fourth grade. So we have similar programs all the way through, not a different tech tool every year that your child's at the elementary. And then we did purchase DreamBox Math that we talked a little bit about last year at board meetings as well, which is a really strong research-based program that really is individualized at the level at which a kid operates. So it helps kids who aren't yet at target get exactly what they need, but also extends the thinking. And that is one of the things that fourth grade credits with that huge jump in number that they saw, is they felt like for the first time they had more kids move from meets to exceeds than they'd ever seen, but part of that is those kids were getting exposed to concepts that are well beyond fourth grade in their individual time. So our goals for this year, then, like Amy said, are really kind of set out in that new strategic plan that we have. So in the strategic commitment of all students are at grade level in reading and math by the end of third grade. The state has now revised that to get rid of the third grade part, but so we're kind of doing the same that we did last year, but increasing those expectations again. So our new goal around MCA for reading is increasing from 51.5% in third grade to 54.5% in the spring of this year, and that's based on that cohort data. And then from fourth grade, moving from 60.6% to 63.6%. As part of that, how we'll know if we're doing that, we are using our FastBridge measures as some localized data and have set goals for each grade level around those measures, since we do those screenings three times in the course of the year to help us inform if we're meeting towards what we hope to see on our MCA scores. We've also gotten a coach that we're working with for literacy who's coming out two days a month to work with kindergarten through third-grade teachers and help with the science of reading practice that they've learned from their letters training of last year to make sure that all of that training actually goes into practice and application in the classrooms. And then we have some new resources that we're implementing in terms of phonics instruction and also morphology, which is the understanding of the meanings of words. So we have a program called UFly, kindergarten through second grade, and then a vocabulary surge program, which addresses understanding of words and their meanings for third and fourth grade. We also have a goal around that same strategic commitment, but in the area of math. So third grade, we're looking at increasing MCA scores from 69.3% to 72.3%, and for fourth grade, since they were so high last year, we're just saying that they will remain at or above 75%, so that we can kind of keep that same threshold. We again are setting some localized measures based on fast data, kind of informing us along the way as we go through the school year, if we're getting closer to meeting where we hope to be on those MCAs. We're going to continue with our reflective practice team collective efficacy cycles, and then having teachers work collaboratively, and then that continued use of DreamBox, making sure that every student has a minimum of 10 minutes on that tool daily. Our last strategic commitment that we have at the elementary school is all students exhibiting physical, social, and emotional well-being and feeling connected to their school. So we are going to have 97% of kids in grades K4 that will be able to name by name at least one trusted adult and two friends who care about them at school. So we have a survey that we've developed that we're going to be doing in the next two weeks here, where teachers will be meeting and interviewing kids on, can you tell us the name of one adult that you think cares about you? Can you tell us the names of two students? And then we'll work to kind of help those kids who kind of get flagged from that survey as not being able to name an adult or not being able to name a student, to help build those relationships as we go throughout the school year. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gertner?
You can't get out that easy. You can't get out that easy. Good evening, everybody. First things first, I'll just walk through our 22-23 goals, just to recap those. As we kind of look at these in the curriculum department, the curriculum portion of our goal-setting, last year we decided to look at updating our science curriculum, which was definitely outdated, and so I believe that was successfully done. That involved Joe as well, Vio working with our staff, but we did, we did adopt Amplify Curriculum, and that has been very successful, so we're moving into two-year, year two of that. In terms of professional development in the middle school, we tackled our MTSS framework, which we are continuing to do. Last year, when we took off with that, we were really looking at trying to establish that positive culture, looking at how to help kids self-regulate, so we focused really on the behavior, social and emotional needs portion of that. And I said that that was partially met because it is a huge undertaking, and so we're still in progress, working on that, and this year really biting off the academic piece. So I'll talk more about that in a moment when we look at 23-24 goals. Kind of moving on, another one of our goals was to look at the facilities piece and really try and help our students develop further capacity to use flexible learning spaces. I believe that was partially met. Again, that is a goal that is going to take time. One of the big pieces with that is building capacity in the kids so that they can handle different flexible learning spaces. So it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the MTSS piece. When you can get kids to learn how to self-regulate, collaborate, work together, manage responsibility, then those flexible learning spaces start to become more of an option for kids. So again, those two are kind of hand-in-hand, so really looked at that as being partially met. Kind of wrapping up here on the technology side of things, we wanted to look at continuing to promote individualized instruction, using applications that differentiate for kids. We kind of ran into a wall, to be honest with you. Last year, our students really struggled with technology management, and kind of looking back, what I really believed happened was during COVID, for about two years, kids sat on technology for a significant amount of time, came back into school and struggled with managing technology, specifically phones, and then managing the devices, the learned devices, Chromebooks, they wanted to toggle into and look at other things. So I won't say it backfired, but it led us down a different pathway, which is why we just decided to come back this fall and reboot kids and say, no more managing of your phone on your own, we just, classrooms are cell-phone-free. That has been a huge step forward for us. Checked in with our eighth-grade teachers today. Those are the students that I think were probably the most, struggled the most with managing the technology. We continue to support that phone-free classroom. They're being much more deliberate about when they use technology. So for example, in math, I've asked Mrs. Regner to go back to using pencil and paper so that you can verify and you can authenticate student work. Our kids are very resourceful. They became really resourceful during COVID, and so the problem is we don't get accurate feedback, if that makes sense. So we're taking some of those steps, so we didn't meet the goal we were initially supposed to meet, but we, I think we're going after the right thing now, which is making sure that we know what our kids can do and teaching them through more of a building. So that's kind of how we wrapped up the year. Moving forward into 2324, I want to thank you guys for putting together a revised strategic plan for the middle school. We sat down as a leadership team. We looked through that and said, where do we align with, or where do we need to align with our district's strategic plan? So one of the strategic commitments that we really felt we needed to align with was all students exhibit physical, social, and emotional well-being and feel connected to their school, building off of what we started in 2223. We are kind of moving forward with some action steps that are supportive, but adding a little more accountability. For example, we last year started introducing staff to interventions that they're supposed to be implementing in collaboration with our interventionist. It was her first year in the door. She was also a psychologist. This year, she's full-time in that intervention position. When teachers are assigned intervention, we now have a system for tracking to make sure that they're implementing their portion of that with fidelity. We're administering a student survey that the kids are going to actually administer this year. We decided we're going to let our web leaders collaborate with our leadership team. We're meeting with them this week. They'll administer a survey to the kids. We think that our students are going to be more receptive to being transparent about how they feel about their school and those kinds of things if they're working with the peers. So that'll be a second piece of data that I think will be very useful. We rolled out our PBIS model this year with, it was much more strategic, much more data-driven. We had baseline data. And the last piece is just continuing to hold what we call support team meetings with each of our grade-level teams bi-monthly to check in on progress for interventions, to update them, to make sure that our office staff, our support staff, and our teachers are working in unison. So that's where we're at with Goal One. Our goal is that by the end of 2024, 85% of our kids are managing their behavior appropriately. Right now, we're there as a building. It will be interesting to see how that ebbs and flows, but we're right now at that point where about 85% of our kids are successful based on the way we've created that environment and culture. We might see a little bit of a dip in that as we get into the school year and kids kind of start to feel the rigor and those kinds of things, but I want to maintain that. The second goal, this is a goal, again, connected to our MTSS model, but it's really built around the academic side of things. We're not happy with our data, flat out. Our MCA data and our FastBridge data are saying, hey, you know what? Not enough of our kids are proficient. Something's wrong with, in terms of how our rigor and our alignment of curriculum. So I asked the staff to go to 85% of our kids being proficient. It's ambitious, but I decided to go that route and said, we're going to go for it, and I want everybody to do everything they can humanly possible to think about taking that leap. It's significant, and my intent was to say, we're not trying to take a modest step. We're going to look at doing things dramatically differently. And I know Joe has been a part of that process. We've been meeting with our math and our language arts teachers since September, and we're asking them to basically set aside everything they've been looking at in terms of curriculum, go back to standards, and we're building out assessments that measure secured standards and then using the right materials and focus to deliberately make sure kids are securing those. We're using some technologies that really help us with that. Lots of meetings and lots of time the teachers have devoted. We're pulling them out of classes for three to four hours a week. But I would agree, I think the teachers would agree that it's valuable. What they do, what they're doing, they feel is different, but it's on the right track for them. There was so much curriculum thrown at teachers during COVID that was online, and we did not take the time we wanted to to go through and do the alignment because everybody was working from home. Not an excuse, but just kind of a reality check for me. Couple more things there. We're making schedule changes as we need to, to be more responsive to student data. So in fifth grade, they're doing some restructuring with how they're using instructional time, how we're using our interventionist. And we're just now starting to pull data from the teachers based on the assessments they're giving and really looking through that together to make sure that we know where kids are at and we're all on the same page with how we're responding. So much more data-driven. The last piece here, wrapping up Goal Three, by the spring of 2024, the middle school will develop a building-wide homework policy. So putting a homework policy together, as the leadership team meets and starts to look at this goal, we're starting to realize that it's not as much about homework policies as it is about what happens from 8:10 to 2:50 in our building to make sure kids are engaged, to make sure that we're focused on what kids need to accomplish. And if kids aren't participating in their learning, we do something more deliberately about that. So we will have a homework grading practice in place this year, but I think the bigger goal is kids come in and they're productive and they get the job done at school. They have work-life balance. We don't have kids that have 30 missing assignments. We don't have parents frustrated trying to figure out how to do algebra again. Most of our kids, if not all of our kids, get it done during the school day. So parent feedback, we're soliciting that. I think they're on the same page. I see heads nodding. You can relate. Student feedback from our DEI-plus-B sessions, acknowledge that they, even the high-achieving students, are stressed. Takes a lot to hold up the A and B in a sport. And then we're doing a lot of PD work with staff on this whole concept or philosophy of what our expectations are for students participating at school, and that'll start November 6th on that first PD day. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions, comments, thoughts from any of you guys? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Henan.
Well, good evening. For curriculum, we had two different ones. One of them was Language Arts and Science Departments. We're going to go through curriculum review, and Joe led that, and the curriculum was purchased, so that was successful. The other one's a little bit bigger undertaking. We, as you know, we redid the Profile of Graduate, and that was something that we really felt needed to be updated. Again, a lot has changed in the last five to six years. And with that, I think what happens is, for example, that's where a lot of new courses end up happening. That's where I alluded to, the nursing assistant, health careers. We have like speaking in the workplace and writing in the workplace, and that kind of drives, when we promote new classes, does it lead to what kids need now versus what probably felt good 10, 15, 20 years ago, but is almost irrelevant now. So again, that's always ongoing. We do that every single year, but I think the Profile of Graduate was a, it's a significant guide in developing what those courses should be versus just maybe a passion of what a teacher likes, but is not relevant to what maybe a student needs anymore. For professional development, we had two different ones, and they're kind of, you know, interlocked basically with, we're trying to make sure that students had a positive experience at school and understanding this idea of belonging and again, and just of their own personal well-being. Again, this is ongoing because it's something that we're going to keep doing every year. I alluded to in the second one, the mental health in the sense of belonging, that, you know, we did that mental health first aid training through To Be Continued, and, you know, I think staff, if I asked them, would say that was probably the most beneficial and most effective training we've ever done at our school, in the sense that it was relevant. All of our 10th graders went through that training then as well, and they'll do that every year now. So this year, our 10th graders, and they won't get it to second semester, but they'll get it, you know, that full training as well. Again, I think it was helpful to our teachers because I think one of the things they always said was, we want to help, but we don't, we're not counselors, we're not therapists. So what do we, what do we do? And I think that training gave them a sense of confidence that when there was concerns with students, that they were better equipped to deal with it. Third one is just a similar with facilities, just to simply finish up everything with construction-related because it felt like so many parts were just not done. For the most part, they are now. I mean, even the greenhouse, I see, is getting there, too. So it's nice to see that, but it just, it just felt like so many pieces weren't finished. And again, I think we're getting there. And lastly was with technology, and we've really focused a lot of time on Infinite Campus. Infinite Campus is our user management system, and there's just so much on there that it keeps evolving. And I think one of the things we need to do a better job of is just understanding that as a tool, whether it's communication, even just as simple as reviewing how the grading, grade books are set up and all the different things they can do with how they communicate with parents, you know, just a simple thing that if you put an M in there, it goes as a zero and it will alert parents. But if you leave it blank, it doesn't. You know, there's just little things like that as teachers that sometimes, you know, a teacher will know, and they don't always share because they assume everybody else does. But then we also, we're introduced to an early warning system, and really what that is, especially for the office staff, to, it's a nice way to track data, just to see the links between attendance, behavior, and grades. Before, it was just people keeping spreadsheets and things like that, and that's just not a very efficient way to do it. For the most part, we've liked it. Again, I think there are some, we're still learning about it, but, you know, overall, again, Infinite Campus is something that we, every year, we're trying to learn more about just because they don't do a great job as a system of, I mean, unless you want to pay a lot of money, of doing professional development. So it's something we've had to kind of do on our own, and as teachers have trained each other. So for 2324, we've shifted focuses quite a bit. I think as the previous people have alluded to, we have taken the strategic plan, and in some respects, we've almost copied some of the measures because we wanted to be aligned. I think as teachers, I know they comment to me that they will have a bigger buy-in to the whole plan if it's, if it all kind of aligns. So for example, we had five separate goals, and a lot, you know, there's some that are, they're linked, but one was just, again, that students feel valued and connected to our staff and students. For the measures, we use the same things that oftentimes we're going to use as a district to measure. But again, we're trying to introduce some nine-grade advisory ideas, more student check-ins. Our leap time is different than it was before. Again, just continue with just, again, more of those check-ins and then documented check-ins with the two counselors, myself, Chris, and then teachers as well. I think there's been a much better way, again, of connecting all the dots so we're not four isolated bodies with how we're doing that. A second goal was, again, another line was just staff culture is positive. And again, we're going to use different survey results and different other things with staff. Again, just to celebrate, promote the positive of each other. Staff loves to do different things, and we try to encourage them to try to, you know, plan and celebrate and simple as potluck, just more time that they're together. But again, also to lessen the isolation because, again, we have a lot of one-person departments. So, you know, we can't say meet in your department sets themselves. So it does help, I think, that we keep that positive. I know last year, you know, we were really happy, I think, that we had a really high number there in high school. We want to make sure that we don't lose focus of that, make sure we're checking in. For example, like after first quarter, we're going to do a survey with them already, just a quick five-question check-in with them. Third one is the students are prepared for post-secondary plans. And again, we're going to use graduation rates, post-secondary experiences, and senior exit surveys to track that. So for example, one of the things we're doing with every senior this year is we have a chart, and we're keeping track of the amount of career exposures they've had over their high school time, whether that's a college class, a work experience. We're keeping track of all the speakers we're bringing in this year, all the field trips, all those things to kind of give a measure on when they leave, what is the average amount of exposures they have. Because our goal is that 100%, 100% of all of our students will have at least one career exposure. Obviously, we want more than that, but at least one is the goal. Goal Four is about parent communication satisfaction, and again, this will ramp up once our admin assistant starts in a week. That will help again. But again, we're trying just to make sure that, it's always that fine line as a high school about how much to communicate, but even just like last week, we sent out a letter to all the senior parents, just about all the events. Because it's a busy year for seniors, and I think even for us, it helped us just plan the whole year out, just to get ahead of the game because all of a sudden, it does get busy, and then all of a sudden, here we are, a month from graduation. And then again, one of the new things with the secretary, like there'll be a bigger social media presence and things such as that. And then lastly was just our effective implementation of the Tier One and Two strategies. And again, for that, we're doing a, just a deep dive on tracking of our grades and just trying to make sure, and it has paid off. We are about one-third of, I mean, not to say it's only F's we're looking at, but obviously that's a main, we need kids to pass in high school. We are significantly less F's at this point than any of the past five to six years. So I think some of the changes we've made have really paid off. So those are the five areas we're going to focus on. Again, they're all aligned to the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the action items. Resolution 24.07, ratifying the issuance and sale of general obligation tax abatement bonds, Series 2023A. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the sale of the bonds did occur, and tonight, we have Lauren Volz from Baker Tilly here to kind of give us an update and an overview of that sale and the next steps in terms of approving the resolution of the sale of the actual abatement bonds. So Lauren, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Volz from Baker Tilly. Just wanted to give you an overview of last week's sale and the results. We solicited bids on a competitive basis on the 17th on behalf of the district for its general obligation tax abatement bond, Series 2023A, in the amount of $7,695,000, proceeds of which will be used to finance various district parking lot improvements. And five bids were received for the Series 2023A issue, and Northland Securities in Minneapolis submitted the lowest bid for the issue with a true interest cost to the district of 4.13%. And from highest to lowest, the spread between bidders was 17 basis points for the issue, so that's like hundredths of a percent, so it was very tight. And bids received were well below the projected interest rate that was estimated in September of 5.25%, so we're about, about a percentage point lower than anticipated. So this issue was structured without a tax rate increase, and debt service for 2024 and 2025 is paid from capitalized interest, so bond proceeds. And the district's first tax abatement levy will occur in 2026 to coincide with a drop-off of the district's existing debt. So future bonding capacity is preserved. So subject to action by the board to accept the lowest bid from Northland Securities, we will coordinate closing with the district, and you can expect proceeds on November 16th. Are there any questions I can answer?
None at this time?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Resolution 24.07, ratifying the issuance and sale of the general obligation tax abatement bond, Series 2023A.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that is a mouthful.
I figured I'd read the whole thing since everybody else already did.
Exactly.
Make sure that we knew which one it was.
Item B, acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising, which is Resolution 24.08.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have four donations we'd like to recognize tonight for your approval. The first one we'll call out is Mayor Baseball Club donation to Mock Trial Team for the amount of $1,000 for supplies, state expenses, et cetera. The second donation is from the Watertown Lions Club, also donating to Mock Trial in the amount of $3,000, again, for travel, state term expenses, and so forth. Also, our third donor is Pam Olson, and Pam donated to the Industrial Tech Program, 60 sheets of half-sheet plywood, I believe, and other materials, again, with help in the reduction of student project costs. So this is a significant savings for our students that they'll have this wood in order to make their supplies or their projects, excuse me. And lastly, an anonymous donation going to Wolf's Ridge. Each year, our sixth-grade group goes to Wolf's Ridge, and this $1,000 donation will help cover the costs for students with financial needs. So we'll accept at this point your approval and...
I make a motion to approve the donations. On second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on the donations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, health and dental insurance renewal. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, I just want to bring to your attention, Mr. Chair and the board, the district is entering into a new two-year health plan agreement with Health Partners Incorporated. It is a Minnesota company. And just to outline our process, this year, each, every two years, we go out for bid for our health insurance, and this year, we had, I believe, four or five, excuse me, different companies that bid on our health insurance. We do have a broker, his name is Mark Belts, and Mark goes out and solicits those vendors to make a bid on our healthcare costs. One of the things that Mark said, we had some really low claims in the last few years, which has really driven down our costs significantly, to the point where we had a number of players that stepped up and made a bid on Watertown Mayor. So with that being said, the companies that did bid were Health Partners, Medica... to the point where we had a number of players that stepped up and, and made a bid on Watertown Mayor. So with that being said, the companies that did bid were Health Partners, Medica, Peep, let me double-check here, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and United Healthcare. Again, significant costs, decrease for the district in terms of going with Health Partners, almost a 9% decrease in our, in our premium. So again, the district, for the most part, our cost savings, we won't show that in terms of, you know, we're paying out a certain amount of premiums for our staff through the contract, the collective bargaining piece. But going back to our employees, it's a really nice, significant decrease in money they can put back in their HSAs and so forth. So really nice savings there. The other bonus was in year two, they capped at a 0% increase. Very unheard of, really. And then those of you I know who've worked in, in this field, I think we were very surprised by the fact, it was amazing. It was a really good rate. So with that being said, we are, we did work with the teachers group. I see Mr. Rundell here tonight. He was very influential as well in, in working through those bids with Mr. Belts, our representative, and Mrs. Raider. And again, just very satisfied with a reduction and certainly a cap in year two. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the insurance renewal. That's stated.
Second?
Motion made by Ms. Getzko, seconded by Mr. O'Nell. Any further discussion on the health and dental insurance renewals? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D, 2023, 2024 district teaching and learning goals. Ms. View.
Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, for being able to be here tonight. I just wanted to go over some of the goals from the teaching and learning desk. The goal statements and for each professional development and curriculum and instruction have really not changed. The, that overarching goal and that statement of purpose kind of has not changed. So again, we want to provide a variety of relevant and personalized learning opportunities for our staff that's going to enhance our learning experiences. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The, the next slide there is, is our action plan on what we're going to do in order to achieve that. The great news is, is we seem to be in alignment all the way across the district here because I don't think anything you see there is anything that's new, which is great because then, right, that creates cohesiveness. But we're really focusing in on our MTSS and tier one. I've talked with you a couple times about our breakout sessions that we had at the beginning of the year and how that was very well received. And we got somewhere in the neighborhood of 11 or 12 different breakout sessions and just providing different personalized opportunities to help them, to help staff grow as professionals. We're going to repeat that again in January 22nd. We're going to come back on November 6th, that, that professional development day, and we're going to have conversations about what instructional strategies that were evidence-based, did they try during this first quarter, what evidence did they collect that it was, that it worked or that it didn't work, and then what's the recommendation, would they recommend other staff members use this or not? So we're just going to kind of have an open dialogue, just talk about good teaching at, at that point in time. And then as Mr. Gerton talked about, we're going, we're working at the middle school to align our assessment questions and make sure that level of rigor is appropriate. We're giving all of our kids access to grade level rigor, which is one of our focus areas. We'll be starting that, that, that new tool, I believe, was, is Mastery Connect. It's a test item bank. I think I've talked about that. But we're going to be working with our elementary staff here over the next several months too, to develop similar type of assessments that's going to, again, align and give us information directly about each of the benchmarks in reading and mathematics. Our next professional development action plan focuses on the equity, and I think Mr. Gerton talked about this as well, on homework and practices and, and what's the purpose of homework, how do we make sure that kids have access to that, that it's going to give them meaning and get them the results that we want, as well as, you know, not everyone has the same amount of access at home. Some, some children, I might have to go home and take care of other siblings. Some parents might be working second and third shifts. And so there's a whole access of, of equity there that becomes very interesting hurdles to overcome. And then if you're relying on that as part of your grade, that, how, where does that fit into that equity component? So we're really focusing on, on training staff and, but again, that's a different kind of line of thinking about how do you use your time in class? Because now if you're not depending on 20 or 30 minutes of homework, that's got to come someplace. So we just have to, so we're working through that. And then how does that affect us and what are we doing with our grades and our grading practices? And how does that maybe influence or not influence that as well? So we're talking about that with our staff. From the curriculum and instruction side, right, we want to have an organized process and system for continuous review and revision. This year, we're going to be looking at our high school and middle school social studies. And Bob and I will be talking about some of the changes that are going to be taking place at the high school in the near term because we've got to have scheduled updates for next year already as that implementation comes into place. We'll have to look at ethnic studies as a course offering and how that plays into the overall scheme because there are ethnic study standards that are supposed to be taught across everywhere. And so we're going to have to look at how that comes into play. And then where does that fit into our middle school staff? And we're going to take a look at what the standards are and do a whole alignment kind of a process there. We are looking at, from our Mastery Connect, our test item bank, how many test questions might be available in social studies from that program as well. It's not near as much in the middle school grades, but there's some more available in the high school. So could that be possibly used? And, you know, how might we be able to realign that and just take a look at that again? And then, yep, getting right back to universal tier one instructional practices as a focus and aligning everything to our standards. So being, right, laser-like focused. I think Mr. Gerton mentioned that last time. And also, I would like to just say that part of our kickoff impetus for, with this has been largely due to Ms. O'Connell too. She did her first training with our teams over the summer in the middle school. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. And for the teaching and learning goals, have to be approved, correct? Looks like?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2324 district teaching and learning goals.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Felts, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E, MSHSL Foundation Application for Grant for Student Participation. Mr. Samansky.
Good evening, everybody. This is just our yearly check-in as far as our opportunity to take advantage of a grant from the Minnesota State High School League. And we are looking for your support to do that. Basically, what happens is that money is taken and used to help supplement any of the participation costs that we have as far as students not being able to afford the, the cost to, for participation fees. So it's just a way to, to make up some of the costs of, of having some of our students participate in our programs.
What has the grant been typically in the past?
You know, it really ranges. It all depends on, on how good of a year the high school league has with the state tournament. The more people that go to the state tournaments, the larger the pot of money.
More money they get.
And, and they're able to do that. I want to say, last year, you know, it's in the hundreds. It's not, you know, it's more than a dollar, which is good. So, but, you know, it's, it's just an opportunity to, to recover some of those costs. So we're appreciative of that.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the review and information items, bond referendum project updates. Mr. Schuler and Bach, probably.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Zimer from ICS was unable to be here tonight. So let's pass along some updates in terms of some projects that are going on. As we mentioned earlier, the greenhouse is officially started and underway in terms of the actual construction of the panels. That has started last week on Thursday. And again, we're up there this afternoon and they're making really good progress. It's about a two and a half week, start to finish, it sounds like. I'm assuming, obviously, weather takes some precedent there possibly. But once they're completed with the work, we can get inside to start hanging in the electrical and some of the mechanical equipment. So that'll be also on the way. Also looking at the pool project, we're talking about the start of that here very soon. The pre-bid walkthrough, there's, there's some dates here, is going to be the 11th, excuse me, the 7th of November. So again, contractors have the opportunity to walk through that project in order to make a possible bid. The bid date will be the 16th, and then the award date will be the 27th of November. So open up the bids then. Work will begin the week of December 4th. So again, it coincides with end of the swim season, end of lessons, and then the pool will be shut down for approximately, you know, two to, two, two to three months. We're looking at a mid-February target date to open it back up and get it started. So again, all dependent on the type of issues that we uncover once we drain it. It hasn't been drained, I think, in five years. So one of the concerns is the tile, the condition of the tile on the, on the pool floor. So hopefully, again, that'll come up as a positive. And we're hearing good reports that it's, was good five years ago. So we're hoping that, that is not an additional piece there of repair. Also, moving on to parking lot abatements, as you heard Lauren talk this afternoon here, or this evening, regarding the bonds, we'll be looking at bidding that out in early January. I think January 11th is our target date to bid those out. And again, with the award date at the end of January, I think the 22nd is our tentative date to award, with construction starting in early June. Basically, as soon as school gets out, we'll get started on those. The other piece, we, our Bach Committee did talk a little bit more about our energy savings project. Again, trying to, to develop what that scope looks like. I think, I know, we've shared this list with you a few meetings back and looking at some of those possible projects. Certainly, lighting is one at the high priority. Obviously, some ventilation issues, some HVAC issues, especially in the middle school, some of the original projects there that just need to, need an update. We also are looking at some state funding, possibly, for HVAC systems. We have some feelers out for that as well. But again, still pretty preliminary in terms of just defining what we're talking about and what financing would be available for that project. So anything else, Bach members, comments, questions, thoughts?
We just want to keep continuing meeting. We just keep finding more projects.
Every two weeks?
Kind of the never-ending committee, I think. Good progress.
We used to keep numbers on what meeting it was, and I don't think we have for the last year.
We ran out of digits, I think. Excel can't go that big.
Any other questions on the bond referendum stuff? All right. Item B there, and the strategic plan updates.
Yeah, each month, like I said, we're going to give you an update on how our plan is going. And this month, I'm just focusing on communication. Had a couple neat opportunities the last few weeks to communicate out. October, we communicated out regarding our learner outcomes to our parents, talking a little bit more about our tiered approach and interventions and what that looks like. November will be our focus on financial stewardship. That's our second commitment. So you'll see some information coming out to parents regarding our financial stewardship within the district. Also, I was able to do the state of schools address the last couple of weeks. We started with the mayor, city council on October 9th. Again, they were very generous to give us some time during their council meeting to kind of walk through our plan. And this year, my, the presentation really focused around the teaching plan. It was our primary focus to give our community an update on where we're at with that in the next five years. And then last Wednesday, right before the break, we were able to host the Watertown Chamber of Commerce in our TLC space. So we provided lunch, walked through the state of the state address, and then actually gave them a really neat tour of our CTE facility. And so I think we have over 20, 25 chamber members that took the tour. We broke them into four groups. And it's a really good feedback. It was really fun to hear some of the folks that have not been in the school for, for a number of years, some in the community that just didn't know our kids had the opportunities that they have, and especially that CTE area, and, and just the options that kids have. So very fun to see some of that excitement generated from those tours. And then lastly, we will be putting out an internal communication. One, one thing I think that's important for our staff to see is our progress towards our goals and our teaching plan. So Heather and I are working on an internal communication to our, all of our staff, just on some of the progress we've seen in the first two months of the school year. So that'll come out hopefully this week. And I can share that with you too in my weekly report. Any questions?
All right. Moving on to the administration reports. We heard from the principals and Ms. Dimmler already. So we're going to start tonight with Mr. Samansky.
Hello again. Real quickly, official participation numbers for the fall were at 273 participants on our teams. Preliminary numbers, we had us down seven compared to last year, and that is where we ended up with the final numbers. We are still nine to the positive from two years ago. So a little dip compared to last year, but an increase from two years ago. Boys and girls soccer seasons are complete. Both teams made it to the section semifinals. Football, volleyball, cross-country start section competition this week. Swimming will be in a couple of weeks. Congratulations to the Royal Volleyball Program for being the co-Rite County Conference West Champions, their fifth title in the last seven years and the 99th in school history. More on that at the November board meeting. Middle school basketball, middle school girls' basketball started today. Winter registration is open. It will be snowing soon. Musical rehearsals are in full swing with performances November 16th, 17th, and 18th, the Suzical this year. And most of the fine arts programs will be underway in the next month or two.
Any questions? Awesome. Thanks, Mr. Samansky. Mr. Schuler?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Just a couple of things, just to note. I thought this was interesting that there's 65 school districts going out for bond referendums on November 7th. Quite a high number. It's the highest number since 2017. So again, just a lot of, basically, school, new schools, upgraded technology and security are the top three areas in which that bonding is, is occurring. Again, one of the quotes that I saw recently, again, just, again, we passed a record number of proper spending for schools. It was certainly appreciated, but that came with a lot of caveats in how we could spend that money. So I think that's why a lot of districts are going out for those bonds right now, referendums, and the fact that the money wasn't intended to be directed towards technology, security, or new buildings. It was, you know, very targeted funding this past year. With that being said, a couple of our neighbors in, in our area here, Howard Lake Waverly is going out for a $600 operating referendum per pupil. So that's a per pupil piece. Mount West Tonka, to our east, is going out for a $93 million bond to upgrade their facilities. And that has also included security upgrades, major work to their high school, and I believe a, a football track and soccer field, lacrosse upgrades too. So those are the two schools in our area that are, are going out and certainly wish them the best of luck here on, on November 7th. Lastly, on Wednesday evening, we'll be recognizing four outstanding teachers at the Educators of Excellence Awards Ceremony in St. Cloud. Rebecca Wagner-Miner, an early childhood special ed teacher in the CLC building. Angela Ekaliason in the elementary sped department. Melinda Young, a STEM and project lead-away teacher in the middle school. And Nick Urban, high school, middle, excuse me, high school social studies teacher will be recognized. And I know our principals have been great to attend. I'm actually staying back to do contract negotiations. But Mr. View is going to be taking my spot up in St. Cloud to recognize our outstanding teachers. So again, we'll congratulate them officially at the November board meeting. So that's all I have.
Any questions? Any questions? All right. Thank you. Moving on, are there any board member reports from the last month?
Personnel Committee continues to move forward. As you can see on the agenda, we've got two more meetings coming up with the teachers that are scheduled at this time.
And the pairs.
Do we have? Yeah, pairs, did we, oh yeah, November.
Yeah, it's a November date, I think.
There's some November dates, yeah.
Apologize, I did not get that on there.
Is that what's left, then, for you guys? Pairs and the teachers? Then it starts again, right?
Got a little break.
Little break, all right. Anything else?
Just the Education Foundation had a very successful senior royal night. They raised a nice sum of money, so a pretty great event, and I think they'll continue to be supporting many more scholarships for seniors. They are in the midst of deciding what they're going to do again next year, so. Thanks to all that participated, or donated, or bought their raffle tickets.
It was a great event, and they did a great job, yeah. Very good.
Right, and communications meets this week?
Thursday.
And Southwest meets tomorrow. Darren's our guest speaker, or I mean, guest superintendent.
Well, there'll be no speaking, that'll be just, yes, guest superintendent.
Anything else? All right, well, hearing nothing else, we will take a five-minute recess, for as long as it takes to sign all the paperwork, and then we will come back for a closed session. Thank you, guys.